I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a moment of silence, please? Roll call, Trent.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Heising.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counselor Turena.
Here.
Counsel President Steers.
Here.
We have six members present. We have a four.
Okay. Counsel has had time to review the council meeting from August 7th and committee the whole minutes from August 17th. Get a movement on that?
I'll make the motion there.
I will second it.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Department heads, our, a lot of them had open houses today, so we got two of them not here, but we'll go on to Keith.
I'll do what I brought to you Thursday. The only additional thing is today Jeff Nulow gave me his letter of retirement effective October 1st of this year, so.
October 1st?
October 1st.
Okay.
So he would join with me in wishing him the best of wishes.
The first or the 30th?
First.
First. How many years of service, you think?
Twenty...
He started in recycling right out of high school, didn't he?
Yeah, so.
Been a long time.
Did you tell him no?
No, I told him I would have to show him how to use a typewriter or computer because he had it handwritten out. "I'm retiring on this date. Thanks." That was the little letter.
At least it wasn't on an index card like I would have gave you.
Did he do it in cursive? Could he read it?
I could read it, yes.
All right. Anything else? Any questions for Keith?
Unless anybody has any questions.
Looks like there's paving underway, so.
Paving should be completed. I didn't know if West Drive was the last one to get done. I believe that should be done tonight.
Wait a minute.
West Drive?
It's done. They're gone.
Okay, so all the paving for this year has been complete.
All they gotta do is pick up the roll.
The new road, the new extension of Seneca, out there, Arrow Trails is in. I don't know if you have any to do. It's a stop sign at Seneca and Arrow Trail.
There's no stop sign there?
At Seneca and Arrow Trail, there's none.
No.
Yeah, that needs to happen.
Donnie said Saturday he was hurt that no one from the city come out to look at it that much, and I said, "I'm sure somebody did." Besides that, DW, you was there helping, right?
Yeah.
Then we knew it was gonna get done correctly, and he went, "That, that..." He stopped talking.
I rode down there. I went through the one end, was open to get in, and I got the other end. I had cones, but I drove through. I made it. I don't know why one end was open and the other wasn't.
You weren't supposed to drive through there.
Well, why would they have cones at that one end?
One should have turned around and went that way.
People coming selling the property.
Yeah. You rebel.
Okay.
It is very smooth.
Yeah.
That's when it'll be nice to see all of that developed.
Didn't run over a tree, did you?
No.
Okay.
It'd be nice, I guess, the new Seneca Drive extension if fiber company has already got that infrastructure in place. I don't know if you have a content you can...
Would they still have the same options, though, as what the resident, rest of the residents have, or is it all?
Well, it's already ran down there. I just don't know if they ran it around that road or not. I can check with Sean tomorrow and see.
Now would be a great time to put it in.
Yeah.
I wonder if they weren't allowed in when they were working.
Has he sold any lots?
He's got, I believe, options on four right now, but we've gotta get him formally recorded first before he can legally sell.
Nineteen?
Nineteen lots.
And he thinks he's got four going. That's good.
Very good.
It's good news for the city.
Okay, Tom?
Nothing really to report other than just to, on the recommendation for the restrictions for the golf cart legislation. I apologize for not getting that to you guys right into the committee yet, but we'll get that to you guys by the end of the week.
Oh, cool.
Not taking time. October-ish, remember, okay?
Yeah, we've had a meeting, not a meeting, had a meeting, not a meeting. I'm like, "Are we in? We're out. We're out." All right. Good.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Tom.
Any other questions for Tom? All right.
Got your dingus, Shane.
I washed my tone this day.
Okay, let's move on to our committee reports. We can have Park Board.
Park Board. Two-day August 8th. I was even there.
Cool.
He's reading it right now, refreshing his memory.
I know, I am. Pickleball courts are still in the process. No, it says here Ohio paving.
Yes.
Are they doing it? Is that the ones that are doing?
No, Gettys paving did the roads.
Okay.
Ohio paving is the one that's doing that.
Okay. They, this said finishing a project in town, so they were gonna...
They were finishing Fairway High School parking lot. They needed to get that done before school, and then they were gonna come over here and do that.
Okay, that, I remember.
And I apologize. I haven't been out to Homecoming to see if they've got that started or not, but they should be doing it soon, and Mike Murray is kinda spearheading the fence project and has a couple of options for different fences that may come into the works.
Okay, good. Yeah, 'cause the quotes for the fencing was $52,000, and they were, they were gonna try to possibly have a fundraising option for those, so that would be nice. And the monument at North Park had been cleaned. Looks really, really nice, but if you get up real close, they cleaned it so well now, the cracks are showing, the dirt, so that'd be about approximately $8,700 to fill in the cracks.
Can I pause you there?
Yeah.
I thought when we first did that quote for the monument, it included repairs to it. It never did.
No, because we didn't know what...
The word restoration was used.
Yes.
But I don't know what that actually included, but that, it was, you know, it was kind of like a clean and restored, but there wasn't like a detail given in what that meant.
They did, they did extra patching because they were able to get it cleaned quicker than what they thought, so they did some of the, some of the patching that needed to be done.
Like the glaring issues?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But I asked him once he got done to give us a quote to actually bring it back so that we don't lose any more of the monument, and that's what he came back with, was $8,700.
Yeah, from the road, it looks really nice.
$8,700?
Yeah.
So do we have the funds to do something with that?
That'd be something I'd have to take to Finance Committee, but yes, that's...
I think we should finish the job before winter gets here. It might break worse.
I think that's what they were talking about on the Park Board.
Or possibly just put the dirt back, you know, on the monument.
Yeah, that'd work.
Just a little spat, just a little spat.
It's been a long day.
How many bad people did you talk to?
It's been a long day.
Slam.
You just pulled it.
Let's just re-bur back.
I mean, stuck on that fraternity law.
I believe we should spend the money to repair it. Now that it's clean before it gets worse again.
Who's on finance?
And cracks.
Steve.
So you're going to Steve's and Finance gonna look on to that?
If he finds me, I don't have a problem with it.
If you do that, and then, so we can move forward with finding money and actually...
Let's, let's finish this, and then we can maybe add that on to new business.
I thought it was Park Board.
What?
Nope. There isn't a recommendation yet. I don't believe in that.
Oh, okay. That's good.
And the new playground out the Homecoming Park is kinda still in the works. And the guy that did the Irish sculptures wants to maybe donate some more, but the Park Board kinda decided like if, if he wants to do that, or it would be, it should reflect something in Wasean, like farming, or Indian culture, or, what's that?
The train tracks.
Oh, the train tracks. Something that's relevant.
History.
Yeah. And then the, the mayor wants to have a, next meeting, have a walkthrough out the Homecoming Park and see what's, you know, the pickleball courts and the new playgrounds.
Haven't been out there. Is the new playground equipment project started yet?
It should be the end of this month is when they're looking to start.
If you, if you go out there, you can see where the, the dirt's at and stuff.
The concrete's been poured, I think the rivet.
Oh, it had been?
Yeah. Concrete's there. They're just waiting for, get on the schedule, and I believe playground boss was August 30th, maybe?
And that playground project is something funded totally by the Rotary Club, wait?
No, totally by a donor.
Donated.
Through the Rotary.
I was, maybe I'm confused. I thought there were two separate donations. No? It's all one?
One.
It's one.
It just came through the, through the Rotary. But it's one person donating on this one. Rotary did the one.
Is there gonna be anything done at the, the front part of that, the original part? When it rained last week, I saw two kids on the swing, swinging, and they put their feet down. They were splashing water up because it settles in that area.
That, that is the next part for us to work on, is that one?
It could, it could not rain for two weeks and you go on there and it's spongy.
It's not coming out.
Yeah, they were actually kicking water out. They had fun doing it, it looked like.
Isn't that our splash pad?
Yeah, yeah.
Chief version of it.
It is not.
I think that's about it for the Park Board. Any questions?
I just, I just wanted to add the walkthrough at Homecoming is something, again, that we used to do when we, I was sat on Park Board, and the Park Board actually did walkthroughs at their meetings just to kind of, you know, to be the eyes and see what needs fixed, what needs done, and they would meet at different parks, and I think that's pretty much what we're gonna do, is start at Homecoming till the snow flies and then, you know, discuss the projects and bring them back, but, you know, they're the ones that walk through, see what bushes need pulled out, what needs to be done, sidewalks, things like that. So I, they were, I thought they accepted that pretty good. I feel like it's too cold, so.
Nice. I played pickleball last week for the first time. That was awesome, and the community of the elderly people playing, too, were super friendly and, yeah.
It's less intense than tennis.
Oh, yes. It was, well, I don't know. It was pretty intense. But it was awesome.
What'd you play at?
I played actually in Defiance.
Ah.
Yeah.
Get some money?
Nope, not here. I wasn't invited here. Nobody cares.
Be careful going to the senior center playing pickleball.
Are they intense there as well?
Pretty much.
I don't know if that's been returned or not. Has the commissioners allowed that to come back yet, Harold, or not?
I think six or eight of them were blackballed.
Okay.
That's got a little too intense, I guess, yeah.
It was pretty intense.
That's hilarious.
Okay.
Oh, Tom.
So there's nothing to move on?
Uh, well, yeah, no, 'cause they're gonna, the fencing, but I think they're gonna try to...
Come back.
Come back there, maybe get some fundraising options, so.
And I think I saw in the minutes, Scott, where somebody asked if somebody donated money for fencing, if the courts could be named after that particular donor, and I think the consensus was that'd be up to the Park Board to make such a recommendation. So I think that, you know, if donors are, are thinking about donating, I think that'd be worth a discussion at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did that, I think with the pool, they were talking about something like that, too. Somebody wanted to donate, put a plaque up or something.
Yeah, it does say that. I was even there. I didn't remember.
I don't remember that one either.
Good catch, good catch.
Keep you around.
So the Shane Chamberlain?
Yeah.
Pickleball court.
Brandon is not allowed.
Dig it! I wanna know where the mic's at. I didn't hear it. Jan caught it. All right. To your commission.
That's me, too, and I was not at that one. They, they started a master planning design. I think Stephanie Miller helped them on that, and then John Alexander said he's started a list of treatment removals and planning for the fall. That's about all happened there.
I can't believe the trees are turning already. They're colored.
Did, one of our neighbor tree across the street, and it's, it's a fairly new tree. I mean, it was planted a while back, and it's right next to where they dug with these, those boxes.
I thought that's...
And it's, part of it looks like it's dying. Have, had any trouble with any other trees in town? I was gonna have John look at it, maybe just...
But as far as I know, no, we haven't had any issues.
Okay. Okay. I'll, I'll just ask John about it and have him look at it and see what...
Okay, no movement on that. All righty, thank you. Okay, let's move on to legislation. We have Resolution 2023-12, a resolution authorizing the mayor or her designated to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to enter into any agreements as required, and declare this an emergency.
That would be for the Chestnut and Biden Street rebuild, as well as the Enterprise sanitary sewer project, are the two projects that I would like to present in front of the OPWC.
Okay, I will move on that.
Second.
Now that I understand what it is about.
Motion to place Resolution 2023-12 on emergency reading moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Six A zero A. Motion carries.
Final? Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2023-12 on final reading, and the final reading be passed moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel President Steers. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A zero A. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution 2023-13 is a resolution to amend ordinance 2022-7, annual appropriation ordinance by authorizing the Director of Finance to increase or decrease certain line account appropriations when the, within the various funds listed within the year of 2023. Could you remind me why we were doing that? What does that involve? I think, wasn't that the police for the dump truck?
Part of it was for the, the dump truck that we ordered in '22. It's finally going to be here. Hopefully, the end of this year. We already got the chassis. That is the portion for the bed and the plow, and the rest of the stuff will be installed on it.
Oh, yeah, because we're not paying for the police car.
And there was another item, but I don't recall what it was.
Was Jamie here Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, might be in those minutes, but I remember Kevin talking about the patrol car, but I think it was to go ahead and order that, but not pay until the next year, so that wouldn't have been it.
I thought it was something about the fireman's equipment that was going in for the exhaust.
That's a grant. That was a grant.
That's the next one.
Yeah, those are, those are coming down.
I know the dump truck came, but it didn't have a snowplow with it.
Right.
And that's what, this was about.
For the snowplow and the bed.
Right.
It's not in there.
I thought I read it somewhere, but I didn't see it.
What's that?
Oh, like down here, motion out there.
The grant?
Okay.
The magnet.
Yeah, that's the grant. That's a grant.
That's new business.
Yeah, that's under new business. Jamie just looked to, for the auditors to be here. Okay.
So it's just for the truck?
Always mine, unless there's something else in there.
That's all I... Is that all that's in there?
Yeah.
Just the truck?
Legislation?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, without this, I think there's, there's gonna be a truck with no dump.
13, capital fund.
Yeah.
Public forms equipment.
Just a truck. So I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, that's all it's for. Okay. That's all it's for. It's in your...
Yeah, the, the money was appropriated in '22, but because we didn't encumber it in '22, it went back into the capital budget, so we just need to reappropriate it.
Notice how we like to kinda just shove something over to someone else, though?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Keith.
Second.
Motion to place Resolution 2023-13 on first reading moved by Counsel Turena and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Six A zero A. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We have nothing under second and/or third, so under new business, then, we're gonna hit the grants here, but first, we need a motion to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all bills through September 18th, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all the bills through September 18th, 2023, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel President Steers. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six A zero A. Motion carries.
Under the motion to authorize Fire Department to, to accept a bid for the purchase of a Magna Grip system. That's the exhaust system.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Motion to authorize the Fire Department to accept a bid for the purchase of a Magna Grip system moved by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Six A zero A. Motion carries.
Next vote, you close up on Brandon, get his face.
It's not just me.
Leave it to the youngster.
It depends on who you appoint somebody.
Under C, motion to authorize the Fire Department to accept the safety intervention grant from the Ohio, and that should read BWC, and not just BW, so.
It's all right. We know what you're talking about.
All right.
I'd make that motion.
That works, Kevin?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Shane already did.
Shane did?
You can second it, if you like.
I'll second it. All right.
Motion to authorize the Fire Department to accept the safety intervention grant from the Ohio BWC?
Yes, Bureau of Workers' Count.
Moved by Counsel Chamberlain and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Turena?
Yeah.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Six A zero A. Motion carries.
This isn't necessarily new business, but I don't know where it would go. I just, I didn't think of it Thursday morning of saying something, but I, I just kept thinking this week that it would be really nice to have a Google Doc link on the city webpage where someone could either say, "Hey, the park wherever looks great," or, you know, "The exhaust fan in whatever restroom is out," and it would save us some time in figuring out where, you know.
I think that was what the Facebook was for, on the city Facebook, but you can't, you know, they can, they can respond back and forth to what is put up there.
Well, I mean, if there was, if there was just a simple Google Doc where someone, you know, I think sometimes people don't know who to contact.
Concerns, like the concerns Google Doc?
Yes. I mean, but it could also be, you know...
I think it'd be titled concern slash compliment.
Com, or just, yeah.
Yeah, it could work both ways.
And they need to know something, yeah, something, yeah, okay.
It would save, I think, some awkward phone calls of, you know, them not really knowing who to call and then where to move that information.
Go down to HR, because she's doing that right now, correct? HR.
Anyway, that was just my suggestion.
There is a spot, sort of somewhere, 'cause I've got several emails from a contact where they hit the contact button and it gets sent, and then I think...
Ford departments, but a lot of people don't.
Corinne or Leslie sends it out from there to whoever. If there's an issue or concern or compliment that they can contact us, but I just, I couldn't tell you exactly where that is on our website.
I just thought, you know, people might be more likely to, you know, just instead of complaining, or instead of trying to figure out who they know, or, you know, just be able to just say, you know, "Hey, I noticed this," or "This looks great," or whatever.
That'd be, send that down to us.
Leslie.
Okay.
Two things under new business, yeah. One, let's go back to the monument, because you said we could, under new business.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes.
And then, so Steve and the Finance Committee?
You would like to host, or hold a Finance Committee meeting to see if we can get the, so all he has to do is contact her and say when.
The problem, I don't have a problem. The problem is, the next meeting is until, what, September 18?
18th of September.
So we're talking almost a month before we would act on it. Is there anything, we could do anything to act on it sooner?
We definitely can entertain it right now.
It's okay with me.
You don't have to have, yeah, I don't think we have to have a Finance Committee.
I mean, if it's a motion, I would like to make a motion.
Well, you don't have to. I mean, it, it is nice to have Finance discuss it. It gives, you know, public time. You're supposed to let people know, but this is pretty, I don't know. What do you think?
Well, maybe the estimate could be obtained, and then Council could make at some point a recommendation that move forward.
Honestly, yeah, Council can say, "We would like Finance to meet and, and do that and, and give that recommendation," but move, you know, under, what is the word, that they, they approve pending any complications, or, you know, they may not be able to get in this year, or, you know, the quotes, it was $8,000, whatever.
We, we know the dollar amount.
Like immediately?
Yes.
$8,700?
$8,720 or something like that.
Yeah, so, you know, pending any complications, Council can say that they would worry to that, to Finance meeting and saying it's okay.
When we originally did it, did it go to Finance the first time?
Yeah, there was discussion.
Yeah, but I was like Brandon. I thought originally, I thought everything was included.
Yeah.
Cleaning, restoration, everything.
That would've been on the quote.
I think, I think, I think it'd, it'd be a waste of effort if we don't finish the project.
Right. I, I agree.
It may have needed to, the, the restoration word maybe shouldn't have been used. It may, maybe this stage could be designated as the repair. You know what I mean?
Repair.
Like, it was more cleaning and restoration, and now we need repair?
Would they be even to get in? Uh, we, they can get in and do it?
Should be. Yeah, well, I can't say that bearing any, you know, problems seasonally, like, all of a sudden it's crazy.
Okay, so under, under new business, um, I guess then we could just ask for Council to approve the quote that Keith presented to you. Um, we don't have it in writing, but it's just through the Park Board, so you can actually present it, and we can say, "Yeah, let's go ahead and do it" from the Park Board minutes, and just not go through Finance. And who's budgeted? If we don't find it, then it's probably gonna be coming out of ours.
I'm just afraid if we wait till September.
Yeah, and I think originally, we probably went right from the Park Board. Anyway, didn't we?
Uh, I think so, unless it was just added into a bunch of different things, so, yeah. So that would be under new business to put it in that respect.
I, I'd make a motion to, you know, authorize, uh, the city to expend, and not, not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the restoration of, uh, the monument at North Park.
And repair. The repair of it.
I thought we had the repair done.
No, we have the restoration done. We don't have the repair done.
Now it's a repair.
I would like to make a motion that we, not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the repair and restoration of the monument at North Park.
I'll second. I'll second that.
In any other word that begins with R.
Just make it, make it look good and be done.
Did you get that? Okay.
Council Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Tariano?
Yeah.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Steers?
Yes.
Six eight zero nays, motion carries.
And Corinne, I just put that to reflection from the Park Board minutes, so that at least it was something that was brought forward that way.
It's all done.
One other thing, Keith, I know driving by Dunn's, there's this nice red truck with a box on the back of it. You might wanna drive by and take a look at it, 'cause it looks like it'd make a great addition to our fleet.
Yeah, what's that sitting there for?
I think it's Tree Kings.
It's, it used to be Tree Kings, yeah.
Oh, it used to be?
It used to be Tree Kings.
Oh, he traded it in?
It's used?
Yep, it's used.
I thought it was a new one that he...
It is pretty, and it's very well taken care of it by the Tree Kings.
Okay, give him an estimate of how much he could spend.
While we're talking.
I don't know, but it would make a good thing for Public Works, for behind it, chipper behind it.
Anything else? You said two things. What was the other thing?
Oh, old business or new business. The lights seem to be constantly on at the South Park Basketball, because somebody was mentioning it again.
Yeah, I believe, I believe we had a electrical issue and we need to get the timer changed in it. Right now, it's, power's on. You can turn it on, turn it off, but you have to manually do it. It's not gonna shut off at a certain time if you don't, so... We have, we have...
Does this president is getting upset?